I would like to call to order the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustees Meeting for January 11th at 6:31. Let's call roll and everyone tell us your location.
Dan Gaffney.
I am in Independence Township, Michigan.
And Dan Green.
I am in Independence Township, Michigan.
Allison McFadden Kiesling.
I too am in Independence Township, Michigan.
And Nancy Moon.
The Lady of Clarkston, Michigan.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
I am in Independence Township, Michigan.
And Ann Rose.
Clarkston, Michigan.
And Crystal.
Independence Township.
Excellent. All present and accounted for. I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Dan has moved and Nancy has seconded. You approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden Kiesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
And Crystal.
Yes.
Excellent. Now is the time for the call to the public.
I don't see Laura this morning or this evening.
The public is recovering from holiday.
I did send her a link to make sure she could come, so.
Okay.
But I didn't hear back from her, so I'm not sure.
So we will close the call to the public. The consent agenda has eight items. I'll accept a motion for its approval.
I move to approve it as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved by Jan and approved by, I seconded by Ann that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Anyone have a question about any of the eight items? If not, please call the roll.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden Kiesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
Crystal.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Library statistics.
It was a little more organized. I got your statistics right into your packet this time. I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at those.
Yes.
There are a few things on there. Obviously, our downloads were huge this year. Circulation was still really good despite the fact that we have had to had so much time that we've been physically closed to the public. Our wireless is still getting used. You remember, we had that grant that allowed us to push the wireless well out into the parking lot. And use the wireless even though we're not physically in the building. And then also programming. We've been able to do a fair amount of programming virtually. And that went into the state aid report, which we'll talk about a little bit later. In addition, there is a 2020 year in review in your packet from the marketing team. 2020 at a glance, they sent out 68,000 postcards this year. Postcards in four different batches that went out to all of the residents to help connect with those residents that maybe aren't on social media to make sure that they knew about the services we were offering. They did 600 plus mailings to new homeowners. So basically what they've been doing is capturing those new residents in the community and been sending them a welcome letter and an invitation to sign up for a library card and providing them that information. They've done over 1,200 social media posts, over 100 each month. And of course, we were voted best library in Southeastern Michigan for the second consecutive year. So those were all high points. They strengthened community relationships. They filmed a number of additional episodes of Ask Your Representative and they collaborated with residents in ITV in order to do that. They worked with the US Census Bureau to increase community census participation. Invited the Oakland Literacy Council to utilize our business center back when we were able to be open to the public. So that was early in the year. We also welcomed Michigan Works by having a table in the lobby to help people throughout the year when we were able to be open to the public. And we fostered corporate connections and secured fundraising to support the summer reading challenge. So those were our sponsors. Bowman and I've cutting union. Also, we were reaching out in innovative ways through video. We did a, we miss you during the closure. We did a video on that. We did a welcome back video for phased reopening. We did a number of staff book picks. And we also did explore and for instructional videos about our e-resources when we had to close to the public. And then in terms of print, we reformatted the Explore Magazine. We did those postcards, which was a new thing for us this year. Those homeowner mailings we talked about. Curbside flyers and promotional inserts and also incorporated QR codes into our designs to make that easier for people to connect in. And then in terms of digital media, we increased posts on LinkedIn, e-resource promotional campaigns, increased internal branding space and worked on the, they've worked on the phased reopening messages as well. And then they were meeting regularly with various staff members in order to keep that marketing going despite the fact that some people were working from home, some people were working in the building. And so they worked really hard to keep that connection going amongst the staff. Any questions about any of that?
Very clear.
Great.
Okay.
So the next is the director's report. A lot of, of what I've been doing this last month is on the board packet tonight. So just a few basic updates. Absolute fire protection completed the work to correct the issues with our aging fire suppression system outlined in the proposal the board approved in November. Unfortunately, we are still experiencing a few small leaks. Their technician will be back in the library today and probably tomorrow as well to continue to troubleshoot these small issues until we have them resolved. The library's annual state aid report that goes to the Library of Michigan has a reporting period of October 1st, 2020 to February 1st, 2021. And covers data from the most recently completed fiscal year because we have a January to December fiscal year, the data to be submitted covers 2019. This year, the state also added a series of questions regarding the library's COVID response from March 1st to September 30th of 2020. The report has been submitted and included in tonight's board packet. From a financial update, in November, we submitted our application for an Oakland County Cares Act grant for reimbursement for unexpected COVID-related expenses incurred between March and December of 2020. Our request was for a reimbursement of $49,828.61. Our application was approved and we received our payment before the end of the year, before the end of 2020, I should say. This will allow time for our accountant to balance the funds back into the budget prior to our audit of the 2020 books this spring. And then last but not least, this will be nice since Laura isn't here to update you on that. Friends of the libraries, successful new venture, the online reading market that allows buyers to browse a selection of books through the library's website. Pay for their purchases using your credit card through the Friends PayPal account and pick up their purchases using the library's curbside pickup has been going very well. With this new project is a need to have fresh supply of materials to post and sell on the site. So beginning on January 6th, the Friends started accepting donations on Wednesdays from 10 to 2 at the library's delivery door. And beginning on Wednesday, so January 13th, the Friends will also accept donations from 6 to 8 p.m. on Wednesdays. And for safety reasons, donations are only accepted once a week so that items can be quarantined for a few days prior to being sorted.
So that second time was from 6 to 8?
8 p.m. So every Wednesday it'll be 10 to 2 and also from 6 to 8 p.m. We wanted to add that evening time slot because not everybody's available.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yes.
Okay, any questions for Julie? Thank you. Now let's move to regular business. And our first business of the year as always is to elect our officers. So at the ti, at this time, I will accept motions for each position. We'll start with president.
I'll nominate Marilyn to be president.
Second. Second.
Dan has nominated and Allison has seconded. Are there any other nominations for president? If not, we'll move to vice president.
I nominate Dan Green.
Okay, is that Jan? And seconded by Nancy?
Yes.
That works.
Any other recommendations or nominations for vice president? If not, we will move to treasurer.
I nominate Janice Gaffney.
Second.
Nomination by Nancy, second by? Yes. Dan.
What's his name?
Any other nominations for treasurer? If that, finally, I will accept nominations for secretary.
I now nominate Alice McFadden Kiesling.
And I'll second that.
Nancy has nominated and Jan has seconded. Are there any other nominations for secretary? If not, I'll accept a motion to accept our slate of officers as presented. Chris has moved, Chris has moved. Who's, do we have a second?
I will.
Nancy is seconding.
Hey Marilyn, I'm sorry. I forgot who made the first move.
I made the most.
Thank you, Chris.
Chris and Nancy. Any questions or comments? I would like to thank the entire board, both those in positions and those who are supporting everybody for an excellent job during this very exciting 2020 year.
That's one way to put it, Marilyn, exciting.
Exciting, yeah.
Y'all think I've heard that one.
Please call the roll.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden Kiesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
Crystal.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Election officers is completed for 2021. Thank all of, everyone for volunteering to serve. Now let's look at item number two, update of damaged and lost material recovery charges policy.
Chris Nito is here this evening. He's the head of circulation and he wants to talk to you about the items and loss and return section of the damage and lost materials policy. It needs to be updated for a better patron service. So take it away, Chris.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Chris.
Hi.
Nice to actually see everybody in one place. There are just two minor changes. One is removing the fee to replace the library cards. The original policy basically had someone coming in, it sounds like with fragments of their old card to replace, you know, and get charged. Well, we're not charging to replace the card if they request the new barcode anyway. So it seems to me sort of pointless to charge them for the, the replacement card at this point. The other change was to the actual lost and returned of items. Basically, the initial, the original version had them having to bring in a paper receipt to prove that they paid for it. Well, we can do that in the transaction summary screen of Polaris anyway. All they need to do is come in with the item in person and prove who they are. And we can take care of the rest. We can see that they paid for it. So it seems a little analogy to me. Still ask for a paper receipt when it's something that we can do on our end and just make it a smoother experience for the patron.
Excellent.
Yeah. Anything that makes it easier for everyone is
Absolutely.
is a good thing.
We're definitely in favor of that.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for Chris?
No, just welcome.
Welcome.
Yes.
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 I will accept a motion to update the damage and lost material recovery charges policy.
I'll move that we adopt the policy with the changes as presented.
I'll second.
They, okay.
Nancy, Nancy got me.
Nicole, Dan has moved and Nancy has seconded.
You fall.
Any questions or comments? That was very clear. Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
Let us take, take the roll.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden Kiesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
Crystal.
Yes.
Motion is passed. Thank you for your presentation.
And again, welcome aboard. I've been wanting to meet you, but you're, you're
I know.
I'm not standing by the curb when I come to get my books.
Well, let me know next time.
Oh, yeah. You can meet out there.
Right, I'll just stand outside.
Just wait a little, everybody's into.
That sounds very good. Hopefully, when it's warmer.
Yeah.
Exactly.
All right, let's move on to number three, introduction to the new community information network website.
So I have, I have support this evening with this one. This is Mary Susti from IGD Solutions. IGD has been working on this website for quite a long time. Quite a process to do. I'm just going to go over briefly from the packet, just a little backstory about this website. So that you've got some information. In 1994, the Independence Township Library received a Library Services and Technology Act grant, LSTA, from the Library of Michigan to create a website of information on the homes in Clarkston's historic district. This project was a labor of love for Susan and Bill Basinger. The website compiled years of research and photos of these homes and featured an online walking tour of the area. It was very cutting edge for the time. This website is still a very valuable resource, but over time, its format has become less and less compatible with modern technology such as mobile devices. In 2016, the library board approved a project to undertake a complete overhaul of the site. It has been quoted undertaking, but the content was transitioned into a database format which allows a great deal of flexibility in assigning what information about each home appears on each page. Pages can be designed to include selected fields from one main database record. This means that if an error or a typo was found in the text, it can be corrected in the main record and the update appears in every location that field of text appears. Pages can be created to cater to different audiences such as children versus adult researchers, only including fields that users might need and allowing versions for kids to be less text-heavy. Additional fields of information can be added to the template and that information from each house can be entered as it is gathered. Then it automatically appears on any page that decide to include that field. Efficiency and flexibility of this new design will serve us well for many years to come. In addition, the classic version of the site will continue to be available through a link on the new site as long as technology allows. So what I'm going to do is provide a little bit of a tour of the site and Mary's going to help me when I stumble.
I'm here, I'm here.
Notice I said when, not if.
It's all good.
Okay, so I am sharing the screen. This is the test site. This is not live to the public quite yet. We wanted the board to have an opportunity to see it first. So the first thing that I want to do is scroll to the bottom of the page and show you that it does have a much more modern feel. And I'm going to just give you a second to, to remind you what the classic right here at the bottom where I click on classic website. This is the original site. And if you go to the Clarkston Historic District on this site, I'm going to take you to the walking tour. So this is the original site. And as I said, it was very cutting edge in 1994. And so here you can see this little map on the walking tour. And if you click, it takes you to each house on the tour and you can take them in order. Okay. So now that you've seen that, let's go back to the new site. And you can see that we've taken some of those same elements and we've worked them, incorporated them into the new site. So the first thing is we've realized over the course of time that there are different types of users using this site. A visitor might be somebody who is visiting the village in order to go to one of the local restaurants and happens to see an interesting house and would like to know a little bit more about that house. So they want sort of an overview. Some of our users would be youth. And there is a tour every spring for the youth to, the youth meaning the second graders who have local history as part of their core curriculum. So you can imagine that what that youth page needs to look like, first of all, it should be more kid-friendly. It should have things that are specific to their assignment, that kind of thing. Then we have the historic district in depth. Those are the people that are true historians. Those are the people that are doing genealogy work that I have, that have Clarkston connections that are really interested in architecture and some of the more sophisticated kinds of things that each page might include. And then we have the Clarkston Historic District homeowners and homebuyers who might want the page to reflect something a little more specific or a little more homey about their home. So what does that mean? What that means is that IGD created a database. And what I mean by that, let's see if I can bring this up all by myself. And if not, Mary's going to help me.
We believe in you.
Worked this afternoon, but you know how that goes. It is still Monday. So far, so good. So I need to go to contents. And I'm going to just take an example. So this is behind the scenes. This is what you would see if you were the person who was actually making changes to the site, if you were a systems administrator. This is not the public side. This is, this is the behind the scenes side. And I'm going to show you what those fields look like. So essentially, what they have done is they've created a record for each house. And it's a template and each house has the same information added. There's a title, there's a number, there's the side of the street that it's on. There is a, an oldest photo, the most recent photo, there's a short intro, there's a main description. Lots and lots of fields that give us opportunity to put information in about each house. Official property description, information about the history, the genealogy, the post office history, lots of room for photos. And at the very bottom, we also have some things that were not originally on the site, which have to do with historic district commission kinds of things. We have the ability to add the certificates of appropriateness. So anybody who owns a house in the historic district knows that you need to try and keep it within certain parameters and you need to talk to the historic district commission if you're going to make changes. So for example, they don't tell you what color you can paint your house, but they do tell you that you shouldn't put aluminum siding on a house from the 1800s. That you should use something that's more appropriate for reproduction of that house. So when the historic district commission approves those things, we can now add them to the website and make those available to the commission easily so that they can get to those quickly. The other thing that, the other thing that we're working on, I shouldn't say that we necessarily are working on, but the historic district commission has a study group that is working on. And we do have a librarian who's assisting them with that is the historic district survey form. So for each house, the historic district commission or the historic district is a, an official state designation. And there is a form that was filled out on each house, or should be filled out on each house in, in the district that includes specific information about why that house is included. So we now have a place where we can post that. And not only can the homeowner see it, but also the public can see what made that house historic and why it was included in the district.
Good.
Now, these are, there's fabulous list of fields here. There's a ton of fields.
Yeah.
However, not everybody's going to want to see all that. So let's think about those second graders. Do they really care about those certificates of appropriateness and? The historic district survey? No, they don't. So what we have done for them. Oops. Lost my link. Hang on. Closed a window I didn't mean to close. It's okay, I have a backup link here. There we go. So now what we've done is been able to designate under each category what's included. So if you go into the
I'm sorry, Julie, it still shows you as logged in. If you logged out, that'll give you them a better view.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. That way it'll remove all that stuff. There you go.
My little zoom bit was up over top of that and I couldn't see it. Thank you. Okay. So if you go into the youth section. And what we pick, let's pick Buffalo Street. And the sample that we're going to use is 77. 77. So for a child's version of it, now we haven't done all of the fancy colors and things like that. We would like to work with the schools and make this children's pages more exciting and include things that would be part of their curriculum. But what we know the kids would be interested in is probably the oldest photo of that particular house and the newest photo of that particular house. And then student information. So if that house is included in their, in their school textbook or anything like that, we can actually link that right in and it would be on the page there for them when they take that tour.
Excellent.
So now let's go back to the site really quickly and see how this compares if you were part of the in-depth. Let's go to Buffalo Street. Hop down to 77. And see that there's a whole lot more here.
Wow.
Who owned every, who owned it?
Yeah.
And plenty of room for additional photos and that sort of thing.
That's fabulous.
It is. Holy cow.
Well, it allows us to have some control over what, what people can see and, and to understand that the little kids, when they're going on that tour, they, they don't want to hear the postal history of that particular. They want to be able to answer the question on their work sheet. And they don't want to have to hunt too hard for it because they're in second grade.
Yeah.
Probably some adults who feel the same way.
Now, eventually our visitor, that's why our visitor page is also a little bit watered down. It's, so let's go in real quickly just so that you can see for visitors. Let's go to Buffalo Street and take a quick look at that 77. And there's some stuff. There's the pictures and the descriptions and things like that, but not all of it. Because if you're just kind of browsing, you're like, oh, I want to see this house, what it looked like originally. It would be the oldest photo, the newest photo, the main description, just some basics. More than what the kids get, but not as much as the historians.
And the way we have the database set up, at any point in time, you can choose to edit how that displays. So if you decide that visitors really do need to see the post office information or whatever, we can add that and simply populate it and then all of the properties would automatically display, display the postal information in this view.
Now Julie, is this going to be on the library site? Okay, so you can enter, okay.
It's going to have its own link, so it'll be a direct link. It's not going to be a CD, CIDlibrary.org/lengthy.
Right.
It will be clarkstonhistory.org.
Great.
So you can get to it directly and then we'll have a link on our site as well.
Yeah.
And then to get to the old site, it will be clarkstonhistory.info, which is what the current link to that site is. So that will keep its original URL.
Okay.
I think that's just marvelous.
Yes, wow.
Historical society must be delighted.
But you're seeing it before they are. So involved in the front end of this, but we've done a lot of work since they've seen it.
Wow.
Excited to show it to them soon.
We tried to do a few things to help the users make this as easy as possible. So Julie, if you go back into the why, the youth one, because the youth has the walking tour map, right? If you go into Buffalo Street, we've turned the map so that it's north and south. If you recall, the last, the old site, Buffalo Street was turned, so it appeared to be east and west. So this way, it's truly north and south. So we don't have to change the compass each time. But then also, when you walk the street, if you start at seven, go down to 77 and cross the street. I have two children that went through second grade in Clarkston and mine were the ones that wanted to know why number 15 wasn't on their list for Buffalo. And if you scroll down the walking tour, if you scroll down the page just a little bit, we've made a notation, a sample notation. There's going to be a little asterisk. If you look down, it says corner lot is 15 Walden Road. So anyone who wonders, well, why is 15 not on my, on my list? They now know just as 21 and 22 are Church Street, even though their little red arrow goes over what shows 21 and 22.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So we've, we've done that for all the, all the properties that are different on the map.
This is a tremendous amount of
Oh, it's great.
And so depending on how you view, you may see the maps as that with the arrows. But then if you go in buildings by address at the very top navigation, you're just looking for an address, you want it all in order. So the streets are listed alphabetically, the lot, the properties are listed numerically this way. Easy to find.
I love databases because they, you can do all this kind of stuff just by rearranging things and not have to re-enter everything at each.
Right.
As new fields are, as we think of new fields that we want to collect information on, or if the state were to change what goes on to that historic district form, and we decide we want to gather something new, we can add a new field. And as we collect it on each house, we can add that information and it will just populate. And so the houses that we don't have that information yet, it's not like there's going to be a hole on the website for that particular one, or that we have to go in and find it each time. We put it in the main record and it appears where it's supposed to appear.
Wow, great.
So it's very powerful in that regard.
Yes, it is.
Very nice.
But there's so much more.
There is so much more, we're not done yet. Okay. So one of the other things in the, in the historic district homeowners and home buyers, we've put in a little flexibility thinking that perhaps homeowners might like to highlight some interesting things about their home, and we have created the ability to do that. And so in this particular area, if for example, a homeowner would like to show off what might be considered more of a real estate type photo of their home, maybe they have a really neat dining room or something that's got something that's historic that they would like to share that normally we wouldn't share on the site. This is the window where we could put that in and the homeowners could provide us with some additional interesting photos to put in. And they would show up on the homeowner's, home buyers, but wouldn't necessarily show up for the kids. Because the kids may not care about things like that.
Yeah, I think I dropped in some sample photos. Sample old photo, sample additional photo, sample homeowner photo.
Right. Gothic revival.
And they could, and they could talk a little bit. And there's some room here for general homed updates and real estate description. So if they wanted, if they had a really well-written real estate description that they would like to share through this, they could do that. One of the things that we had heard when we did our initial conversation with the committee about sort of transitioning this website was, you know, what, what would you be interested in seeing? And we heard a lot about how the historic district website is an opportunity to market those homes and to, to raise interest in owning. It's a labor of love, owners work on this, as some members know. And so to be able to talk about the charm of the home and some of the interesting aspects of being a historic homeowner, this, this provides that ability. But still separates it out so that true historians can have their, their area as well.
Wow.
And then the field for general contact, like who to contact if you want more information about the home? Because not the, the owner or the person who resides in the home isn't necessarily the person who can give the historical information. Wasn't that the key piece of that? I found that interesting.
So we, we've created a lot of flexibility within the site while still honoring its original design. Okay. So in addition, the original site included a genealogy section. And in the genealogy section, that's where historic figures are tied to the various houses. So when you're in any of the pages and for example, you know, the homes owned by the Clark brothers or that kind of thing, you can click and it will take you to that information. But if you're interested in just a particular individual, so here at the top, you can see all of them or you can hit C and it'll take us right to the Cs and we can hop down and we can find Nelson Clark and we can find information specifically about him. So that's very easy to find.
Fascinating.
Yeah, it is.
So then one of the other things that came up in this discussion was the historic district versus the historical society. So the historic district is an official organization that is, that is appointed by the city that oversees this district that is part of the National Register of Historic Places. Whereas the historical society is a local organization that is interested in gathering artifacts and history of the community. So what often happens is people who maybe own a historic home or are thinking about owning a historic home, think that they need to contact the historical society to talk about changes they might be thinking about. And that's not correct. So we did plan to put something on the website that would help people differentiate. These are two very different groups and what they do is very different. In addition, down at the bottom, we do have a contact us, which talks a little bit about the three groups, gives you that contact information. You can go in and select the recipient of the email. You can contact us directly. Each one of us has an email and a phone number, or you can do a form and send us questions. So if you have a, if you find an error on the website, for example, a typo, that would be something you would contact the library about because we are in charge of the website. If you have a question about a historic home and changes that are being made to it, that would be the if you're interested in the genealogy, you want to know more about Nelson Clark, you would contact the historical society. And each one of those is listed so that you have the ability to contact each one individually for whatever it is your, your information is. Then, as we talked about before, there is still that direct link to the walking tour. And I saved one of the really exciting parts for last, this is super exciting to me. The interactive map, this is something the old site didn't do. So this is actually a map of the historic district. This is Oakland County's official map of the historic district. And this is an interactive map, meaning that when you click on a particular home, it takes you right to the home. It's all interconnected. So now that I've seen this home that was owned by Nelson Clark, and I want to see the houses next door, now I can click on this little arrow and I can see the house that's directly to the right of it. Or I can go back and see the house that's directly to the left of it. So I can walk up and down the street anywhere from that interactive map.
Wow.
Marvelous.
Yeah.
I mean, it was marvelous in nineteen ninety-four.
Technology's come a long way, but it still honors the hard work of Susan and Mill Basinger and all of their, all of the information that they've gathered. It still has the similar feel to how it felt before, but it is, it is able to adapt to mobile devices. So if you're walking around town with your iPhone and you want to be more about the homes, you can do that and it will, the site will move to fit whatever size device you're using.
Julie, if you make your screen, if you click up in the corner and make it this a window and go in and out, you can see the text wrap. Yep, so if you take the side of it and make it narrower, like the side of the hole, yep.
The old site didn't do that.
No, it didn't.
No, you'd have to try to turn and, and like, yeah, no, this is great.
Yep. Okay. Last but not least, we did create a login portion to the site for our historic district commission members so that they can actually log in and get to that certificates of appropriateness section. So that's something that now instead of all of those forms being paper and in a file, they will be able to upload those. And especially, hopefully we won't be in COVID times forever, but that would be something they would be able to do remotely from home. They could go in and see those just by logging in on their computer. Whereas I, I don't believe that there's any way that now they would have to email them back and forth and that kind of thing. Whereas net, whereas with this, it would allow us to upload those right to the site and they would be able to see a whole list of the certificates of appropriateness for each house, what they talked about previously, what previous commissions even talked about. They would have access to all of that at their fingertips, but we would give them the ability to log in and, and manage that separately. Any questions about any of that?
So unlike WikiLeaks, the general public is not going to be making changes to the site.
Nope, 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 we're not going to do that.
Even those who log into the commission page only have access to view the commission page. They do not have access to log in and edit the site.
Right. So when will this be complete?
We are actually able to go live at any time, but I wanted you all to see it first.
Oh. Fantastic. Yeah, we want to get on it.
Only have the gallery too.
Oh, I forgot about the gallery.
The gallery.
Forgot to mention the gallery. Okay, so there is also in the original site, there was a, a gallery of photos. There it is. So the historical society has the ability to share photos with us that we can put on the site. And there will be a section, I wish I could show it to you. We don't, we don't have that set up yet, but they have created a really neat feature where it's a, if there's a photo that will be split and it will show kind of like what you're seeing above here, the historic part on one half of the picture and the modern part on the other half of the picture. And then the slider in the middle, you can click and drag and move either way and see the entire historic picture or then go back and see the so that's to come. We're really excited about that.
Yeah, that's really cool.
That is going to be nice.
When the historical society did an entire display of sort of then and now photos, we thought that they were pretty fabulous and what a great opportunity to take that collection of old and then add the new ones. See what they look like then.
Oh, that's fantastic. Wow. Yeah.
That work has been designed, we just don't have the photos sold yet.
Yeah, very, very nice.
Any questions about any of that?
Well, somebody who has spent a lot of time in the current system. This is spectacular, absolutely spectacular. Thank you, it's absolutely wonderful.
I remember, yeah.
I can't wait to use it.
You were still getting information on some of the homes, right? Were you updating?
Well, I'm, I'm chairperson of these historic district survey forms that will be added. So yeah, it's a big project.
Oh, yeah.
It looks like a big project. I, I'm reminded of a million years ago when I was in college and we were doing, collecting data on various properties along probably Sixth Mile because I went to Mary Grove in Detroit. And we went from building to building and I'm, I'm thinking, wow, something like this would have been fabulous.
Wow, yeah, that is very nice.
Well, we thank you for sharing all of this.
Yeah, we're excited.
Thank you, I'm very impressed.
Yes.
Well, kudos to Mary and her team. They have been really great to work with, they've worked so hard. And one of our interns went through and, and was looking for the teeny tiny little things for them to fix. And every time I would say, here's a couple of little fixes and they would be right away.
Oh, my God.
Yes, the backend is very, very user-friendly. So it, it makes editing the entire site really simple. Whether it's text that needs to be updated, images can be updated very easily. It's very user-friendly.
Great, great.
Thank you, Mary.
Very nice.
Happy to be a part of it.
Any other questions about that?
Very clear.
No phones needed, but I will be talking to Mary in the next few days and we'll finish up tying up the loose ends and we will get that live soon.
Oh.
Exciting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time this evening.
Oh, you're very, very welcome. Enjoy the rest of the meeting, it was nice to see all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Excellent. Now to the less fun review of the state aid report.
Okay. So public libraries in Michigan are formally established under state law and must file a report with the Library of Michigan each year in order to maintain their certification. This certification verifies a library's eligibility for state aid funds, penal fine money and government grants. The filing season begins in October and has an electronic filing deadline of February first of 2021. Within your packet, you will find the state aid report that was submitted for this year because the library has a different fiscal year than the state of Michigan, January to December versus October to September. The report that was just submitted covers January one to December thirty-one of 2019, 2020, 2019. Due to the significant changes to library services due to the global pandemic, there are some questions that were added to this report that collect data regarding the library's COVID response from March first to September, I'm sorry, September thirtieth of 2020. Unfortunately, when, when you go to print the report, there's a print screen version, which some of you who have been on the board long enough to remember when I did that the first year and the type was absolutely microscopic and almost so the gentleman who handles the data created a template so that we can create a PDF to print out for our board packets. And I just noticed as I was going over the board packet this evening, because I was going to point out that COVID data, that the template didn't include the COVID data in your, in your packet. So I do have a few little tidbits of COVID data that we'll tell you about.
The COVID data is from 2020 and the report is from nineteen.
But they had us load it in because they wanted to know that information immediately. But I thought you would be interested in the COVID data. We talked about 2019 back at the beginning of 2020. So you kind of know the, the stats for that, but some of the COVID information that they collected, which is out of the ordinary for this particular report, but it's not included in the actual printout. We were closed for fifteen weeks between March and June due to state mandate. We were open during March to September thirtieth for thirteen weeks at limited capacity. So that was something that they wanted to know what each community was doing. In addition, they were interested in virtual, virtual live events that we provided. We provided one hundred and eight live children's events. It had three thousand and eighty-eight participants. We had one live teen event that had thirty participants and we had eighteen live adult events that had a hundred and sixty-one participants. And then they also wanted to know about recorded programs, which would include things like our exploring for videos and some of those kinds of things. We did forty-six of those events and that includes child and adults. And there were two thousand four hundred and ninety-five attendees to those recorded events. So they could go at any time during that period. We also circulated internet devices, meaning those little wifi hotspots. We had a hundred and four wifi circulations between March and September. So those were all little pieces of data that I thought you'd be interested in that unfortunately did not print out. Any questions about the state aid report?
I'm, I'm impressed by the, the numbers of attendees on the live events and I, I feel like that, I mean, I, you know, I know if that was actually in the library, we probably would have had considerably more, but I feel like that's still a pretty good, you know, everything is in total chaos everywhere you look. I, I feel like we're still reaching people quite well.
I think our staff is doing a really good job of that. And in some cases, we are getting more attendees because we do our live storytime and if something happens and a child isn't feeling well or something happens and they miss storytime, our attendance goes down. But because it's a virtual event, they can attend it again, they can attend it later. So if we leave it up for a little while, you know, they didn't make the ten o'clock storytime, but they could watch it at two in the afternoon.
Oh, that's nice. That's very nice.
So do we leave it up over a twenty-four hour period?
It depends on what the publishers would allow us to do. Because the big hangup with doing virtual storytimes is the copyright laws and how they pertain to the stories that we're entertaining with in those storytimes. and how they pertain to the stories that we're entertaining with in those storytimes. The publishers were pretty generous. Some of those publishers would allow us to leave, to leave those stories online longer than others. Some of our storytimes only stayed up for 24 to 48 hours. Other ones we could leave up for a week or more.
Okay. Excellent. Are we ready for number five?
I'm ready when you are.
Permission to post positions.
So two of our full-time employees will be starting new adventures this year by accepting jobs with new organizations. The last day for Tracy Beddwood, our Head of Children's and Teen Services, will be January 24th, 2021. The last day for Adrian Palumbo, who's our Community Relations Volunteer Coordinator, will be January 15th, 2021. It's always hard to say goodbye to hardworking team members, but we also want to wish them well in their new endeavors. Both of these positions are critical in providing great service to our community, so posting them in a timely fashion is very important to assure that their good work is maintained and keeps going. So I have included in your packet the, the standard job postings that have been board-approved as we normally do, so. No changes to either one of those.
Okay, any questions for Julie? I'll accept a motion to approve permission to post. Is that you, Chris?
Yes, yes, it's me.
Chris makes the motion and Jan seconds. You motion to approve permission to post the Head of Children's and Teen Services position and the Community Relations slash Volunteer Coordinator position as presented. Any comments or questions? We will miss them. We wish them well. Yeah, that would be my main comment too. They've, they've both been really excellent employees and it's, you know, it's a shame to see them go, but we do wish them luck. Right. Okay, let's call the roll.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Elsa McBaden Keisling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Jan Rose?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, motion is passed. Now we're going to go to number six, which is the review of the Employee Assistance Program.
Okay. In 2020, a global pandemic forced the library to close for 13 weeks. During that time, the staff had to pivot and determine how to provide library services in new ways. As the situation evolved, uncertainty, anxiety, and fatigue from so much change became the norm as we tried to keep providing library services to the community while still keeping the public and the staff safe. In May, it became clear that having emotional support available for the staff would be extremely beneficial. When larger organizations such as schools experience crisis, they have mechanisms in place to bring in counselors to support people. In an effort to mimic this type of service for our staff on a small scale, we reached out to a local counselor who was able to provide confidential telehealth counseling sessions on an as-needed basis. During our simple pilot program, she provided over 20 sessions of emotional support to our staff. The benefit was clear. Being that the pandemic would continue for quite some time, the funding for a more formal Employee Assistance Program, known as an EAP, was written into the 2020, 2021 budget and research into a formal service began. Discussions with other libraries and municipalities revealed a handful of options. Nearing the field to companies that provided the specific services we felt we would use and taking into consideration location, cost, and the recommendations of similar-sized organizations, a proposal from U Alliance based in Troy, Michigan will be presented. And before I get started and do that little presentation, I just wanted to let you know the recommendation that I'm going to be making is for U Alliance's one-to-five fixed visit plan for 2021 to cover all full-time and part-time employees and the cost will be $5,400 for the entire year, which is within the budget that we put in place. And U Alliance will provide reports on service usage while still protecting the privacy of the staff, which will allow us to evaluate if this program has been beneficial and whether we want to renew it in 2022, and this is a budgeted item. So I'm going to go to a screen share. And hopefully.
You have lots of screens.
Lots of screens, I do, I do indeed. Okay, let's start at the beginning. From the beginning, okay. So U Alliance is known as a life advisor employee assistance program. And essentially, they've been around for over 30 years. They are based in Troy. Some of the other places I looked at were not as local, but this one is one that came recommended by a number of local municipalities and libraries, so including the Jackson District Library, the Troy School District, Farmington Public Schools, the Southfield Public Library. Just a number of local communities have spoken to us about this. I was able to actually talk to some people in those particular libraries who were willing to talk about firsthand experiences with actually navigating the system and they, they felt that it was very positive and beneficial. So one of the things that U Alliance talks about is that, that impact that stress has on body mood and behavior. They also talk about that 50% of the workforce is going to likely be impacted by personal issues. And there's a variety of different kinds of issues that could impact the workforce. As we all know with COVID, that 50% is certainly much higher at this time, which is why this is the first time we've really talked about it. We maybe didn't realize the magnitude of how this could be until 2020. And we started really seeing the weight of all of this change on our staff. So basically, what U Alliance does is they have a, a model that includes a flexible number of visits. They also do issue resolution. They focus on total wellbeing and they also have HR support for our managers. And then the, the five points that they think, that they consider are physical, emotional, financial, career, and community. So this is not just emotional support, but it is a variety of support mechanisms. So in this case, whereas the system that we were using in 2020, that the counselor was providing our little pilot program, she was providing us with sessions on an as-needed basis, so the people could call her and, and set up an appointment for the support of the weight of, of COVID. This is actually looking at solutions and helping people to identify what it is that's weighing on them and helping them to come up with solutions. So instead of just being emotional support, this is actually a system that would be set up to help people then develop a plan of action of how to better the situation that they're in, in summary.
How, how long has this been in? I mean, has this been around a long time or?
U Alliance has been around for nearly 30 years now. I'm sure that this particular system has evolved over the course of time. But as I said, I talked to a number of, of municipalities and, and libraries that have started using this. And it's got some really neat features that I think that you'll find to be really interesting.
Well, and the concept of employee assistance has been around for absolutely quite a long time. A lot of larger organizations have had an in-house person I kind of like. And you wouldn't be able to do that in an organization our size anyways, but I kind of like having it as a third party located somewhere else.
Yeah, yes.
So in this particular situation, the, the, the product that is being discussed here, the, or the, the package that's being discussed, they actually have a large pool of counselors. Thousands of them actually, on average, eight years of experience or more. And they are specialized in training for the, for the type of work that, that is here, which is coming up with those solutions and helping people to take steps forward, not just a system by which you vent, but an opportunity to sort of analyze the problem that you're having and, and start to come up with solutions. This program would cover not only our full-time and our part-time employees, but also their families. So for example, if we had a staff member who was interested in marriage counseling or was struggling with a teenager or something along those lines, there's the opportunity for marriage counseling or family counseling or, or those kinds of things. So it, it is a little bit more robust than just directly with the employee.
Okay.
It also includes a 24-hour crisis line. So, you know, if you, if you have somebody who is, was hurting in the, in the middle of the night and need somebody to talk to, this isn't a, I have to wait till tomorrow morning and, and contact the counselor through the telehealth line or whatever. There is a crisis hotline that is part of this package that will then help the person in the moment and then get them started on connecting with a counselor that is appropriate for the situation that is at hand. So whereas our current pilot program, we had a particular counselor. This is a situation where if it were a marital issue, you could focus on a marriage counselor. If it were a substance issue, you could focus on a substance counselor, that sort of thing. It is confidential. And there is also the ability to address issues that have to do with life changes, such as getting married or having a baby or changing jobs, that sort of thing. So not just what we might think of as crisis, everything creates a little bit of stress in your life. You know, babies are, are wonderful, but, but they're a big change along with it. And, and that might be something that, that would need a little bit of, a little handholding to help people get through that, so. So then there's also a piece that is for professional development and communication skills. You have the ability to contact them if you would like help with stress reduction or with wellbeing goals, or if you've got a personal self-improvement goal, you could contact them. So it's not just all negative sorts of things. It's, it could be that if you've made a, a choice in your life that you would like to exercise more or that, there are life coaches who can also help you to create reasonable expectations for yourself and goals and help you create a plan for moving forward if you have something that you would like to do personally that you think would be a self-improvement. It takes into consideration other kinds of life changes such as caring for aging loved ones or childcare assistants or parenting coaching, that kind of thing. So there's all different kinds you can call and they can, they can walk you through any number of connection points. They have a number of resource books that if you call them and you're interested in, they will, they will mail the book to your house so that you have complete privacy on whatever that topic is and it is yours to keep. That's all included in the package. So as a librarian, we all love it when there's books included. And then there's also financial and legal services that are included. So if you need some coaching in that area, they have some ability to do that as well.
So they're offering all of these services for a $5,400 fee per year?
Yep, it is essentially a call and they've got thousands of people in their pool. And essentially what they've done is these various counselors and consultants have agreed that if somebody contacts them from one of these organizations, that they would take the payment from U Alliance for providing a service. And it's sort of like when you have dental insurance and the dentist agrees to take this amount of money to do this type of a service.
Okay.
So there's a, a number of people and it helps them to make connections within, to increase their clientele.
Now, you, you said at the beginning that this includes one to five sessions per employee?
I'll show you the proposal. There's three different, three different plans in place. And based on how our current pilot program was being used, one to five is what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
But I'll show you, I'll show you all three of the plan types.
I just was curious. I imagine there'll be a number of employees who will use zero and, you know, and another number that would use one or two. But what happens if you have one that, that needs more than the five?
I think their goal in this particular situation is to walk them through a process by which they would be making some commitments to try and make improvements. The thing is, we will be getting a report, so if we see that we have a usage that is outside of what our plan, so if we see that there are people who would be getting, you know, you've got, you've got employees who are getting up to that four or five, they would notify us of that so that we could see if it were significant enough that we wanted to change plans going forward. So they will keep us, without telling us who the employees are, we would be.
Right, because otherwise, if, if anyone in the administration knows who the employees are, then that defeats the entire purpose of confidential program.
Okay, so they would call directly to this?
Directly, yeah. So what we do is we provide them with, just like, just like any other kind of insurance or coverage, we provide them with a slate of people who would be covered.
Okay.
They make that, that, that contact themselves. I'll talk in just a moment. There's an account manager who helps us make sure that, you know, when people start working or stop working, that those people are on and off of the system so that we can add people as, as we get new employees or take people off as, as people move on. So that's our account manager. And then there is also some resources for, in terms of HR, for the supervisors. So if, as a supervisor, let's say I, I had a sense that somebody that was working in the library that I'm dealing directly with was developing a substance abuse issue or something along those lines, I can actually call and they have human resources, people that can walk us through the process by which we could help that, the things we need to know from an HR standpoint of how we manage those kinds of things or handle those kinds of things professionally and, and confidentially. So there are support network for the managers themselves. There is an orientation for the employees, so we, there is an education system that U Alliance provides so that the employees know that they've got this resource available to them. Now, it says it could be delivered in person or via webinar. In this case, it would be probably a Zoom meeting or a webinar. There's also supervisor orientation so that the supervisors have familiarity of the things that are available to them. And then included in, in the package is a, was known as a Critical Incident Stress Debriefing. And this is the part that reminded me that this is a service that would be possible. So for example, when there was a, a suicide in the school district and, and they send out this email saying, you know, there are crisis counselors available to the staff and the students. When we started feeling that the staff was being weighed down by COVID, that's when I started asking, well, how do they do that? How, who provides that? So I didn't even know what it was called at the time. All I knew is I was interested in, in having something like that available. This particular program has a, has a built-in ability to do that. So for example, if we were to have, God forbid, the death of an employee or something along those lines, we would be able to call them and they would provide us with up to a certain number of hours of counseling, depending on the package that we purchase, and then discounts beyond that if we needed more counseling. So there's, this is, this is how that works.
Okay, so this is a broader approach.
It is a much broader approach and it's, it's it's assuming, in the same way that the library has lots and lots of resources available and individuals don't use every resource. Everybody uses the resources that they're interested in. This is like a library of support resources for our staff. Not everybody's going to use everything. Some people might not use any of it, but it's all available to everyone, depending on where they are and what they need. So then here we talk about that report that our account manager will provide, that will give us the information about how the program is being used, not who's using it, but how it's being used.
Right.
Giving us that opportunity to evaluate and decide if we need more, less, or perhaps not at all. And then there are webinars and podcasts that are available to the staff as well. So there are some, some great things that are available to help our employees in that regard. They will do the promotional materials and provide those things, so people magnets and wallet cards and things like that, so that they have reminders that these resources are available to them. And then the way that it launches, step one is this presentation where I'm telling you what it is that they have presented as a plan for us. There's a planning, so there would be an implementation meeting. We would meet our account manager. They would gather the information on our organization and then implementation would take place shortly thereafter based on when the board is reviewing this. If you were to approve it tonight and I would call them within the next few days, they thought that they could have it implemented by February 1st.
Okay.
And then here is the plan breakdown. So there's a very basic plan that is one to three visits. There's a little bit more robust plan, which would be one to five visits, and then there's an unlimited plan. And the pricing structure is $4,000, $5,400 or $6,500 per year. I felt like we probably had people that one to three visits. would not be robust enough, but I felt like the unlimited was probably too much for us, given kind of the way it was getting used. And because they have this tracking system that helps us to sort of see how it's being used, we could use twenty twenty-one as our evaluation year.
Yeah, good.
Perhaps in twenty twenty-two, maybe things will get better and we'll need less. More, but if we needed to do that, we would be able to kind of see price-wise how we would write that into twenty twenty-two.
Does that include the board too?
We absolutely can't. Not easy going through all of these things.
But it's good to have support.
It is.
I think, I mean, they, the the pricing seems to be very reasonable.
Yes.
I mean, even even if you go up to the unlimited, that's that appears to be a very reasonable price based on the the size of of our staff and and the pot, the potential for the number of visits and and it's nice. In the past, an employee assistance program typically, an organization might have one or two counselors. But then they don't have the the expertise in all of the areas that that you might have an issue with. I think it's I think it's very well put together.
Any other comments?
I'm just just, I was just gonna say it's extremely comprehensive.
Yes. Yes.
I think so. And we're obviously going to be suffering a number of dislocations this year too. So I think the the center, you know, the middle of the road so we can evaluate.
Try it, yeah.
Right, and if we find that even if in a year like this, only one to three visits would have been enough, then we can, we can downsize the next time. It's not, it's not a huge expense to to learn what the, you know, what the best
Did did any of the employees seem, you know, did they seem pretty? I know I seem enthusiastic, but are they glad, you know, to have something like this?
When we, when we did the pilot program and I was sending it out on a regular basis, and I actually had a number of employees that reached out to me either in my office or via email and said, thank you so much for lifting some of the stigma attached to this kind of emotional support. Some of them actually said, I really appreciate that you're offering it. I actually have my own, you know, counselor or somebody that I'm working with, and so I don't want you to think I don't appreciate it. I want you to know that I already have somebody in place, but thank you so much for offering it because it's so important for everyone to have.
It is. That's that's great. Yeah, very, very good.
I think it's very forward-thinking in terms of where we are today and looking forward to anticipating where support can be in our organization. As a librarian, as an organization, and I agree, I think the price is quite reasonable and I like the five visits just because it gives you a little bit more of an edge on that. And so it's very, very good.
All right, I will accept a motion.
I move that we approve the hiring of U Alliance to provide employee assistance.
I second.
Okay, Jan made the motion. Nancy seconded. Did I miss somebody?
Yeah, I think I'm way over here.
You're so quiet, Ann.
It's okay. I'm I'm not sure that, you know, you can hear what I'm saying.
Yes, that was.
You can, okay.
Our problem with zooming is we never know when someone is speaking.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded to approve the proposal for the Alliance one-to-five fixed visit plan for fifty-four-hundred dollars per year to cover all of CIDL's full-time and part-time employees. Are there any other questions?
You want the board included on that list?
I think that would be a good idea.
I think that's an excellent idea, yes.
Oh, okay. I do too. I I didn't hear quite the answer to that question earlier, so. Good that it's brought up for discussion.
I just wanted to clarify it since the motion specifically said full-time, part-time, and board members. On board members.
Let's amend. Our motion was made by Jan. Jan is going to amend.
Yes, consider it amended.
To cover all of CIDL's full-time, part-time employees and board members. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
And the second, Nancy, you agree?
Yes.
All right, so we're accepting this approval to approve the proposal for U Alliance fixed visit plan for fifty-four-hundred dollars per year to cover all of CIDL's full-time and part-time employees and board members. Call roll.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Jan Rose?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, motion is passed. And then we will evaluate based on their by annual reporting. All right, number seven.
We're in the home stretch. Good, we're in the home stretch.
Review of facilities maintenance to contract renewal.
Yes, so for the past few years, we have had a comprehensive facilities maintenance contract with Allied Building Services. This includes a regular list of tasks that are monitored on a monthly, semi-annual, and annual basis in addition to our regular as-needed work list. This has been a streamlined way for us to assure that our building is being maintained with a preventative mindset instead of constantly reacting to things that need to be repaired. The lead custodian oversees the task list to ensure everything is being completed as well as creating the monthly list of minor repairs that need to occur. The contract was originally viewed by reviewed by the library's attorney. This contract remains the same as twenty twenty. This is a budgeted item and the renewal cost is is the same as it was for twenty twenty. Due to COVID complications, it didn't get on to, we didn't have it soon enough for the December meeting. So I just wanted to make sure we got it on in January.
Have you been happy with their work?
They've been doing a really good job. So the way it works is that we are assigned a specific facilities technician. Our guy's name is Derek. He comes once a month and usually spends two days with us. The first day he does those monthly or semi-annual, whatever, whatever the list is, the standard list, so double-checking
Yeah.
The things in the building, preventative sorts of maintenance. And then Arlene has a list for him the second day he usually spends. And that's when he might be repairing a wall, fixing a doorknob.
Okay.
Whatever. And then if whatever is on that list is outside of his general handyman expertise, they also have the ability to call in plumbing and electrical specialists.
Okay, good.
So, and they also have specific contractors that can do major work. So for example, when we added the wall to the administrative assistance office, yeah, we contracted out to Allied, they sent out their construction crew to do that. So they've been really responsive to what we need and have been doing really good for us.
Good.
Well, it saves, I mean, obviously, there are some things like your fire suppression system that you still need to go to handle that separately, but this gives us the ability, the way I'm looking at it, to cover a a broader spectrum than if you had to find or Arlene had to find an electrician every time there was an electrical issue or a plumber every time there was a plumbing issue. It just is more efficient.
Right.
And.
So this is the list, this appendix?
Yes.
Wow, okay, all right.
To our newer members, back when we were originally discussing whether or not we needed a full-time building-type manager, that was part of the discussion. As time has evolved, Arlene has taken over much of the interior management.
Oh, I see.
Has provided the services and it has worked very well.
Okay, good, good.
And we have some part-time custodians on staff who are able to do some of these things. So for example, you know, if we need to hang up a picture hook or whatever, we don't need to call Allied for that. But if we have a wall repair or if we wanted to install, for example, we wanted to install those little corner guards to keep the book carts from chewing up the corners. They they bought them all, came in, spent an afternoon doing it, and it did not take our part-time custodians away from their cleaning projects.
Yeah, okay, good, okay.
So Arlene has been really good about managing that in terms of making sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck and having internal people do the little stuff and having Allied things are a little more sophisticated.
At some future date, I would like to see us reexamine Arlene's job descrip, uh, job title. I I I think she needs a new, better job title for all of the things that she's doing. So I think at some later date, we need to take a look at that.
And I agree with that. She has really, really stepped up.
Yeah, it's a good point.
The staffing subcommittee will be busy later, right?
Yes.
Sounds like we will.
Very.
We talked about doing that in twenty twenty and then some weird thing happened.
There we were. Any other questions before we accept a motion on this? If not, I will accept a motion.
I move that we accept the I guess the contract, facilities maintenance contract from Allied Building Service.
Okay, Chris has made the motion. Allison has seconded to approve the comprehensive facilities maintenance program contract with Allied Building Services as presented. Any other comments or questions? Okay, let's call the roll.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Jan Rose?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Motion is passed. And now, Dan, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
No move.
I'll second.
Who's our second, Allison?
Yeah.
Okay, Dan has moved and Allison has seconded. Move to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Jan Rose?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is accepted. The meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-four. Thank you all so much.